Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your patience and welcome everyone to the public hearing of the candidates for the 2021 elections of AMCHAM Bulgaria. This is a very exciting moment for all of us because with this event, we're starting the, let's say, official schedule of the of the chamber. And also, we are making the full rotation of of the boards that were starting the procedure back in 2017, 2018 elections and changes of the statutes. My name is Daniel Kirakov and I should be your host and moderator today. And the session will have three subsections. Now, and the first one will be official remarks, opening remarks by the AMCHAM Bulgaria President Olivier Marquet. We have Justin Friedman, Deputy Chief of Mission of the US Embassy in Bulgaria. Glad to have you, Mr. Friedman, with us again. And then we will have seven determined and passionate leaders that will deliver their remarks with regards their motivational experience, why they are running for a seat in the board. And this is the second part. The third one will be Q and A. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to deliver them to our distinguished candidates and they will answer. Few technical questions that I have to address. All the audience will be able to see us as TV stars on your screens, but you will not be able to view yourself, unfortunately. And you'll be able to chat with us using the chat button at the bottom right hand side of the screen. And there are three dots next to the letter chat. You can use them and you can enter the Q and A box when you from where you can type your questions. My colleague Nadia Tatiana and Kalina, including myself, will be monitoring during those boxes. And if you have any technical issues or questions to the candidates, we'll be happy to answer them. So without further ado, I have to say that this session is being recorded for the sake of distribution purposes for those AMCHAM members that are not be able to attend this public hearing. And now I have to pass the virtual floor to our president Olivier Marquet. Olivier, the floor is yours.
Thanks a lot, Daniel. And hello, hello, everyone. Good afternoon. Thanks for being with us today and thanks to the the various candidates who will give their speech. I remember I've been in this position already, you know, twice. So yeah, but I think it is an important, it is important because it kind of sets the tone. And people tend to remember what is being said in those occasions. So dear, dear AMCHAM members and friends and dear Justin, so I'd like to welcome you board in session. So today is a first in many ways. I mean, first, it's it's an online session. So I think it's we've never, we've never had to do it like that. It's not necessarily the best format, I would say, in terms of getting to know better the candidates. It's, you know, seeing people through a screen is not always as good. But at the same time, the beauty is that, you know, it's being recorded. And I think it's also easier maybe to go back to the video. And so I think technology from that perspective helps. It's also a first because we're running this slightly updated process, I would say, consistent with the changes that we've made in the in the statute. So we've tried to make this election process easier and more transparent. If you remember, and I'm sure you would, in previous occasion, we had voting during at the time of the General Assembly. And it was always lengthy moment to wait for the counting and so on. So we decided to disconnect these two processes. So after the the hearing which will take place today, people will be able to vote during a couple of week period. So there is certain things to, you know, in terms of validate the vote. But I won't go into the detail in terms of providing the right power of attorney and things like that. But the beauty is that we'll be able to to count the votes, let's say, without the time pressure. And therefore, when we go to the GA, we'll simply have to approve the final outcome of the process, which again, I think, will ensure, you know, no and, you know, it's in the elections, it's always quite, quite important. So the other thing I would like to say is we have today six vacant positions. And so if you remember, in 2018, we had a special election because we had 12 vacant seats. And we had people who got elected for two year mandate, six people for two year mandate, six people for three year mandate. And so these six, these people with either tick reelection, you have new, newer. And so from now on, it means that every year, so next year, we have another six, six board position to be fulfilled. And so I think it will provide a much more predictable and renewal of the board, not in bulk, but with, you know, part of the board each time. So I think it's also a better setting to ensure continuity among board members. So I'd like to encourage you to obviously be active and exercise your voting rights. Because obviously, the board of AMCHAM is a very important body to to that sets the direction of the board that interacts as well with the US Embassy on a regular basis. And obviously, with with all members and it's taking decisions. So so I really encourage you to to use this right of voting because the more participation we have, the more successful this election will be. I'd like obviously to thank the the six current members which are, you know, leaving their position for their support and their hard work and dedication along all these years. And I'm really looking forward to, you know, I'm happy that we have a very strong pool of candidates and that they will get, they will get introduced. But I'm really excited about the quality of the people who showed interest in in joining the board. And that, I would like to hand over to Justin. Of course, thanking you, Justin, for for being here today. I know your agenda is extremely busy. But, you know, it means a lot to us to to count on on your presence and looking forward to your opening remarks as well. So thank you all and wishing you wishing good luck to all the applicants today. Thank you.
Well, Olivier, thank you very much for inviting me to be here today. You were mentioning the 2018 election for board. And I think that was the first time that I was able to speak with the board, with with the General Assembly of the AMCHAM. And I remember that we had high hopes and for the for the board, for AMCHAM. And I have to say that it's it's a real pleasure and honor for me to be here with you today. Because I have to say that those high hopes have been fulfilled. I think AMCHAM is stronger today. I think the membership is stronger today. And it's thanks to you, Olivier. It's thanks to Petar Ivanov, our executive director. And it's thanks to the board members who have been serving these last two years that have brought AMCHAM to the point where it is today. And so it's, I'm really excited by the fact that we're having a new election, that we've got a strong, strong slate of candidates to choose from. And if I were a member that could vote on the the board or choose a board member, I would have a tough time making my decision. So I admire the the candidates and I don't envy the members for having to choose and make a tough choice between some very strong candidates. But the the bottom line here is that the AMCHAM has come a long way. It's in a great shape now. And I'm looking forward to the vision of the the new members to bring an even stronger AMCHAM forward into the future. This is one of the best AMCHAMs in the world, in my experience. And it really is your leadership, Olivier, and and Petar, who have really made that happen. So we in the embassy talk a lot about growing Bulgaria and the United States stronger together. And I firmly believe that the business to business relationship is one of the most important pillars by which that relationship can grow stronger. And I know that we, these connections that we build are in large part thanks to the hard work of the AMCHAM to make those connections really work. And it is tireless work. It's it's not easy. You've all working on your own businesses. I've met with many of you or a large segment of you. And I know you've got challenges in your own business. So I really appreciate the effort that you all put in to work as a business community for the advancement of everyone and not just your own individual corporate interests. You know, what's making Bulgaria and America grow together is a good business climate here. And despite the COVID crisis, AMCHAM has been very active in a number of critical areas that have made that business climate or can make that business climate, I should say, even stronger. And we've worked together on energy issues, healthcare, EU trade policy, rule of law and education. And when I mention rule of law, I see this as an area for improvement. I don't think Bulgaria is where it needs to be yet on rule of law and ensuring a level playing field for businesses. And and AMCHAM and some of the sister chambers of commerce here within in Bulgaria can be a key voice for promoting rule of law. So I hope that becomes an even stronger element for AMCHAM as we go forward. You've heard me say this before. This is Miguel dictating me, telling me that I've said this before. So I must have said it before, but I'll say it again. And this is, and I'm going to stop because I sent, mentioned Miguel and I should have mentioned him right at the top. And for those of you who know, Miguel Hernandez is our dynamo of a commercial counselor here at the embassy. And it has been his work that has been, I'm sorry to use the buzzword, synergized with Petar and Olivier's work that has made AMCHAM so dynamic and has made our business relationship with Bulgaria so dynamic. So thank you, Miguel. But as Miguel told me to tell you, you've heard me say this before and I'll say it again. American companies, many of whom are AMCHAM members, are providing critical investment to the Bulgarian economy. And this has never been more important as the country seeks to rebound from the COVID-19 crisis. American companies, and I think this is an AMCHAM statistic, but I'll repeat it for you. American companies have invested over $2.5 billion, $2.5 billion with a B dollars in the Bulgarian economy and created over 30,000 good, high paying, high quality jobs. And that's, that's thanks to you, the AMCHAM membership, for giving me that great statistic that I get to cite whenever I need to talk about how important our relationship is. And the Americans, American companies in the United States collectively is the one of the sixth largest investor in Bulgaria. I'd like us to see us move up, move up a few notches on that. And that's going to take our collective effort to make that happen. I'm also proud that American companies set the standard for corporate social responsibility and giving back to their communities. US companies in Bulgaria have invested millions of dollars in environmental conservation, education and healthcare. And I think members remember, it was just not too long ago that the AMCHAM, working with our embassy and of course, with the America for Bulgaria Foundation, came together to establish this United Against COVID-19 Relief Fund. And just to remind you of the statistics, in just two months, we together raised over, over a million with an M, 1 million Bulgarian lev from 44 donors. That's companies, foundations and individuals to support COVID relief and COVID recovery across Bulgaria. So thank you very much for being in a critical part of that, that effort. We look forward to continued fruitful cooperation with the AMCHAM and working together in areas such as security and defense, economics, trade and energy, and strengthening the rule of law, which I said earlier. And this is something we'll work together on because no one wants to be left out dangling being the only one to raise their hand and say, hey. But I think we all agree that rule of law is an important piece of a good business climate. And there's, there's areas we can help Bulgaria get further ahead in that area. So I know that AMCHAM has already planned a number of exciting activities this year. I hope I'll be able to join a few of them in person and not just virtually. And so I'd like to especially flag the upcoming three Cs in events. The when is still to be firmed up, but the why is is critical. The three Cs sew together many of the countries of Central and Eastern Europe into a a more powerful market block. And we see this as an opportunity to mobilize investment funds, particularly for infrastructure development, which are the key to building that north-south link that will pull these economies even closer together. And AMCHAM, I'll say thank you in advance for the hard work you're going to be putting in to create a business event around the the leaders event to be finalized. So in conclusion, I'd like to wish all the candidates participating today best of luck. And I hope that whoever wins, that we will work together to continue to strengthen our already strong partnership between the AMCHAM and the United States Embassy for the benefit of all Bulgarians. So thank you very much. And I'm going to have to, I'm sorry, bow out. So I won't listen to the speeches, but I again wish all the candidates the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Justin. Thank you very much for bringing us back to the history that we did last year with the United Against COVID Fund. It was a tremendous, tremendous effort by those 44 individuals, companies and NGOs that collected a little bit over 1 million Bulgarian lev and bridging us to the three Cs initiative hosting that we will be having in Bulgaria later this year, which is very important initiative that AMCHAM Bulgaria supports and participates as well. All right, so first part is already over. Thank you so much, Justin Olivier, for your opening remarks. And we have to move to the very content of this session, the presentations and the speeches of our distinguished candidates. We have seven candidates for six seats, I have to remind you. And also, each of them will have 10 minutes for their presentations, up to 10 minutes. Being myself the moderator, I have to take the advantage to make some alerts when the time is running out. So please make sure to observe your chronographs, timers, whatever you've got, please. We've got a fixed portion of time. As well as I have to make a disclaimer that everything I say for presenting them is not part of their campaign, neither for soliciting for their support. So it is part of my job and I try to do it in the best possible way. So we've got seven candidates listed in alphabetical order. And since we don't have A, B, C, D, we will start with G. We've got two, Georgi at the beginning and George Alexandroff in alphabetical order and typing is being first. George from Oracle, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Daniel. I'll try to stay within or actually less than the 10 minutes for the sake of time. Dear AMCHAM community, I hope that you and your loved ones are staying healthy and safe and that your businesses are successfully navigating through all the challenges that you may be facing during the pandemic. I would like to start by expressing my gratitude to you for entrusting me, representing you in the board of AMCHAM. Thank you. It's a privilege not only to be part of this community, but also to be one of its voices. I also would like to thank our president Olivier and my fellow board members for the positive and productive working environment, support and experiences shared, as well as Petar and Daniel and the whole AMCHAM team. Thank you for making all the board decisions possible. Thanks to you, the AMCHAM community. The last two years have been an extraordinary experience and I'm humbled and honored to have had the privilege to be an AMCHAM board member. And even more so, to be standing before you today as a candidate for second term. What made the last two years extraordinary are the various activities, events and opportunities for the sectors across the AMCHAM community. But just to mention a few of the key initiatives that stuck with me. First is the Digital Sustainability Forum, where we have discussed how Bulgaria can make the best out of the vast developments of AI. And based on this, AMCHAM created a position paper which was sent to the Ministry of Transportation, Information and Communication Technologies. The second thing is a joint meeting between the boards of AMCHAM and the German Chamber with the American and German ambassadors present, where we discuss how the rule of law can be improved, including something that I feel strongly, very strongly about. The improvements of e-government services as a way of supporting and why not even driving the process of improving the rule of law. The third thing, my work jointly with the AMCHAM policy team on addressing the issues and challenges that the State of Emergency Act introduced last March, notably in relation to the effects of a potential pause of public procurement process and the impact it may, it may have on the business environment in Bulgaria. Today, I am asking for your support and trust by letting me to the AMCHAM board to continue my work and to further build on the AMCHAM platform. The times we currently live in have clearly demonstrated that electronic services that are usable, effective, predictable and secure are instrumental for providing support to the sectors hit hardest by the pandemic. Furthermore, such electronic services improve the communication between the business and the government institutions and give the private citizens contact free services that can improve our daily lives and work against our common goal to have improved rule of law. We have seen progress in the results and effort of the government to provide electronic services. And I believe we as a community can support this initiative to take it even further. In this context, I feel strongly that I can further drive this initiative and use the current momentum as 2021 will mark my 20th year in the information and telecommunications sector, 14th out of which I have spent working for two of the largest IT companies in the world. This experience track record with public entities like the National Health Insurance Fund, Ministry of Interior, Registry Agency, among others, and leadership on the matter are the enablers of my desire to continue my work as a board member of AMCHAM. Well, I would like to finish with the following. I'm happy to see the good shape AMCHAM in Bulgaria is. And to hear from Mr. Friedman that AMCHAM is one of the best chambers in the world makes me feel very honored to have my small part in it. Thank you very much for your time today and for your consideration.
George, thank you very much for your concise speech and full of facts and history track. More than welcome. Next in line, Georgi Ganef, IBM Bulgaria. Welcome to our community. It is your first time that you appeared before the the community will be happy to hear your motivation speech for the board seat.
Hi, thank you, thank you for presenting me. Hi, dear AMCHAM members, dear AMCHAM guests, dear candidates. Thank you for being here and taking the time to listen to us. I hope it will be useful for all of us. I hope you're healthy and good and your families are well. I hope also that this would be a kind of a good learning process. I mean, by meeting new people and interesting characters. My name is Georgi Ganef and I'm here to represent IBM Bulgaria as a country leader here. And I guess my speech will be around three topics. I will present IBM Bulgaria briefly, who we are today, where we started. Why do I believe we have a lot more to add to AMCHAM? Because we've been in that community and we've supported AMCHAM through the years. And third, maybe a little bit about me as a professional and on a personal note so that you get to know me better. Let me kick it off with IBM Bulgaria. Okay, for those who don't know, IBM Bulgaria started here in 1937. Yep, I'm not making a mistake, it's 1937. We closed during communist time, we reopened in 1994 and recently celebrated 25 years since reopening. We started as a very small office representative, mostly sales oriented. And we grew through supporting functions around the globe through a strategic location for IBM. And when I say strategic, I mean location where top notch specialists that are involved in the development of the IBM products are living and are working. So this is where we got through to these 25 years here. And we are around 2,000 people now. We are a very big, very big community. We have very strong relationships with the universities. And this program is helping us to to bring talent and to craft it internally, putting them in a real working environment. And I believe that I'm a good example for that because I started in IBM when I was 24, still finishing my master's degree and I'm still here 16 plus years later as a country leader. If I can, you know, define the people of IBM in Bulgaria and what's helped us to to transform to the level where we are today. I would say that there are two internal things that are core to our DNA. It's how we focus on the customer success and how we bring trust and personal relationship in and personal responsibility in each relationship that we built and we nurture. And I think this is very important to underline because we as IBMers believe that integrity is our value. It's key to everything we do and how we do business worldwide and here in Bulgaria. And me as a leader of this company and very proud of this, of these, these values. I guess I'll go to the second piece of the of my statement today. It's about why do I think we we can continue to support the growth of AMCHAM community? We are one of the co-founding members of this community and we've been supporting AMCHAM to its development, growth and transformation and changes toward it is today. And I believe that we have still a lot of know-how, knowledge, technology, business, and, you know, that we can bring to this, to this community. And I believe bringing our values like customer centricity, integrity and trust in the relationship we build can only nurture the relationships between the local business, the government, and bring a better outcome for all of us, including the Bulgarian citizens. Last but not the least, I will touch a little bit on me to present myself as a professional, as a quite new person as I was presented. As I said, I started in IBM 16 years ago. I did financial work, I did consulting like change management. I did project management of international projects of IBM. And I ended, I ended up in selling, running the software business, running some of the key customers. And as of July last year, I took over the country leader job for the country, running business in Bulgaria. What my job means and what I, and how I see it, frankly speaking, it's, I define it with one sentence. My key, my key role is to drive my team and my people forward. That's, that's all that defines my job. And I'm a big believer in the growth mindset as a concept and the constant learning of how you approach challenges and how you approach problems and issues and how you resolve situations. And this is something that I want to instill and build as a culture and as a mindset in my team. And this is something that I want to bring as potential member of this board as a quality. On the last note, and I'm done with the speech. Me as a personality, I'm married with two amazing boys. I can travel the world for a great meal or a great glass of wine or a great coffee. And I have a great partner in crime, this is my wife. And I guess this would be it for me. Thank you and thank you for considering my, me as a candidate in the AMCHAM board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Georgi. Much appreciated your presentation and observing the time. So everyone, now we're moving forward with the third candidate. This is Ivan Mihailov from Visteon Electronics. Ivan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, dear fellow members of AMCHAM, friends, colleagues here in the panel. I missed the time when these hearings were in person, but today we're online despite the time. So I'm sure the spirit will be kept the same still. So for those who don't know me, I'm Ivan Mihailov, Country Manager of Visteon for Bulgaria and Romania. Also Chairman of the Board of the Automotive Customer Bulgaria and recently another interesting organization, so called Bright. And today I'm standing here as, of course, AMCHAM member since many years of one of the leading, I would say, American investments in Bulgaria, starting first of all as Johnson Controls and nowadays Visteon, but the flagman company of automotive electronics, which today makes us Bulgarians proud of having automotive electronics in almost every European car and other cars worldwide. in almost every European car and other cars worldwide. But I would have a very short message. I want to give more attention on the causes and some, of course, joint projects which we had through the course of these many years with Amcham, but the more recent ones. And always is exciting for me to be part of these projects. Causes which I'm really supporting and they're interesting, and I think they're critical for our country in the next seven, even more than 10 years, are related to education. And I'm sure everybody of us here is really doing its best from the company, which represents or as a personality to keep and to develop further our education. This is a pillar where our country will sustain the competition of the other, our neighbours, even the global. And now we are in a very dynamic changes times which are important for us. So education is one personal cause, but through the years, my dedication there is really as a person and as a company to the highest level. And this is one of my priorities which I want to emphasize. Other thing that I think we develop very, very well with Amcham is the important topics like nearshoring models. And why this is important? Because we all know about the importance of our people, of our resource. We really, as a companies, we tend on our employees. Without them, we won't succeed. So investments these years, many years actually, into our employees are making, as Justin mentioned in the beginning, these investments of the American business so successful. And this is something which really we all together, independent whether it's the board or out of the board, we need to continue to develop also networks with our neighbours. Obviously alone, we can't continue. And in the context of discussions and in the context of the American Chamber, of course, transatlantic opportunities, we need to benefit from this and make sure we benefit from the opportunities the COVID gave us, what means to work remotely, but also to exchange ideas, to give more opportunities even to the startup ecosystem. So in short, this is what really makes me... What are my causes and what we are doing together with Amcham? And this is just briefly touching, scratching actually the surface of causes, which I'm believing and I think will be helping moving forward. Of course, not to mention the other organizations and the people who know me. I'm always dedicated to these causes and making, for example, in the last 12 years, my focus is of course in the automotive business. But nowadays, we see automotive and IT, artificial intelligence, these are all common terms. So I am offering always my expertise and I'm willing to, again, to contribute to those projects and initiatives which really Amcham is doing a great job. So many years, not only probably the greatest, but also the most exciting commercial chamber. I don't want to take more time, I wanted to be short, but to the point. So thanks for your attention, thanks for your consideration, and good luck to all candidates here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan. Much appreciated respecting time and giving us a little bit of scratch of your background and the causes that you're defending. And now we all know that we are connecting from various locations, but we've got a direct link to the East Coast of the United States. And this one goes to Omurtak Petkov from Jinkov, Goginskiv, Kuchikov and Velichkov Law Firm. Omurtak, the floor is yours.
Dear Amcham members, thank you very much for the honour to be able to apply for a seat at the Board of Directors of Amcham. It truly is an honour and a privilege for me. I'm also delighted to be in the company of the other candidates for the Board, all of them senior top executives in some of the largest companies in Bulgaria, representative of American business in the country. So my name is Omurtak Petkov. I'm a lawyer, I'm a corporate lawyer, and I'm a partner at one of the largest and most prominent law firms in Bulgaria. I'm qualified as a lawyer in the state of New York and also here in Bulgaria, of course. I'm not going to go over my CV, it's on the website of Amcham. I just want to focus on two points in my short presentation. One of them is the relevance of my application, the other one is the purpose of my application. So the relevance of it. Why do I think that if I'll become a member of the Board of Directors of Amcham, that will be somehow relevant for the development of Amcham? Well, on one hand, the law firm that I have the privilege to be part of has been with Amcham since the very beginning. Twenty-seven years or so, our firm registered Amcham. And since then, for all these years, the firm provided pro bono legal services to Amcham on all sorts of legal issues that Amcham had to deal with throughout the years. So that's on one hand. We know Amcham from inside out. But also, I come as a background from what Justin called a sister organization, from another foreign or bilateral foreign Chamber of Commerce in Bulgaria. And I mean the British Chamber of Commerce in Bulgaria. My firm and me personally, we were one of the founding members of the British Chamber of Commerce in Bulgaria, officially named the British Bulgarian Business Association. So we were very much involved, we are involved in this organization. And I personally was member of the Board since, before incorporation of the organization actually. And I served as a vice chairman and then for two years as Chairman of British Bulgarian Business Association. So I know these type of organizations. I know their inner workings, if you will. And I think that this experience will be more than relevant to Amcham. But more importantly, we from BBBA and Amcham and also with other sister organizations, the most of the other large foreign and bilateral chambers of commerce in Bulgaria, we had an initiative focused on rule of law and judicial reform back in May and June of 2017. So this is something that I personally consider extremely important to the business climate in Bulgaria, but also to the development of society, to development of the country. So this is something that I would like to continue working on. Amcham is the largest and certainly one of the most, if not the most influential organization of its type in the country. So it will be, Amcham could contribute tremendously to the debate of rule of law, which is fundamental to the development of business and economy in general in Bulgaria. So I would like to continue this initiative. And here is the purpose of my application. That is why I apply for a seat at the Board of Directors of Amcham. Because I would like to work and dedicate my time as a board member towards increasing the influence and the role of Amcham in the area of rule of law and judicial reform, but also in the area of other smaller, if you will, but not necessarily less important legislative reform efforts, which will be focused on issues that are more specific to certain industry and to business, but it will be beneficial to business in general. A very simple thing, but which will be very helpful to business, will be, for example, a reform of the registration fees in the all sorts of registers, land register, commercial registers, so that life of business will become easier. So the goal, if you will, of all these efforts that I would like to dedicate my time as a board member to, the goal of all this will be to make business. Of course, this is Amcham, so my priority will be American, US business, but also other foreign business and Bulgarian business in general. The goal will be for business to feel secure, to feel that the government, that the state is dependable, to feel that laws are enforced in a consistent and impartial manner. So we're talking here rule of law. Other specific legislative issues will also be the focus of my time. But again, rule of law and judicial reform will be the priority in the interest of US and foreign and of course Bulgarian business in general. So this is the purpose of my application. This is what I would like to focus my time as a board member to. Basically, continue the effort that we started back then when I was a vice chairman of the British Chamber. We started together with Amcham and with the other, like the Italian, the Austrian, the German Chambers of Commerce. I would like to continue this effort at a higher speed, at a higher level, if you will. And that is why I apply for the Board of Directors of Amcham. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope I will deserve your trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Omurtak. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you for your in detail presentation of your priorities and motivation while you're running for the Board. And now, back to Bulgaria. Sofia, probably, it is time for Ruslanat Toncheva, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Janssen, Bulgaria, to present herself. Ruslanat, the floor is yours.
Hello, good afternoon. I hope you hear me well. Amcham community, great to see you, you hear me. I'm very attuned to be a nominee for the Board of Directors of Amcham today and having the chance to contribute to achieving the goals of Amcham actually, which are improving really the business environment in the country, the investment climate and the living standards in Bulgaria. I'm the Managing Director of Janssen, the pharmaceutical companies of Johnson &amp; Johnson for Bulgaria, Albania, North Macedonia. I'm also co-chairing the Healthcare Committee of Amcham for the last one year and a half. I'm also chairing the American Pharmaceutical Manufacturers Association in Bulgaria and also teaching in the American University in Bulgaria, which I'm also very proud of, by the way. So Johnson &amp; Johnson, most of you are familiar with the company. This is the world's largest and most broadly-based healthcare company, which is a pioneer of science and innovation for many years. And worldwide, but also locally in Bulgaria, we are constantly working to save and improve lives. And we are also proving our commitments nowadays more than ever in the context of the COVID pandemic, with having our single dose COVID-19 vaccine already submitted for emergency use approval. And the company is doing this on a nonprofit basis really to fight the global pandemic that we are facing. I have 20 years of professional experience in general management, marketing and commercial operations across Eastern Europe, Middle East and African markets in few leading multinational companies. Majority of my experience, more than 15 years, has been in healthcare and pharma business. And honestly, I haven't seen a period where the importance of healthcare has been more prominent than it is nowadays. As we face it, it's in the Bulgarian context, this period of pandemic is giving us actually a unique chance to address all the flaws and the weaknesses of the healthcare system that we have been seeing for years and to make tangible change for the society and the patients. And it's becoming really one of the areas of national security, if I can say it this way, healthcare. Extremely important for each and every one of us. We have been facing these years of, let's say, poor effectiveness of this system here and always having much worse indicators than average EU indicators in terms of life expectancy, healthy life years, high mortality of curable and preventable diseases, things that it's time that we really put in the past in our country. And in this respect, I have been committed quite seriously in the last one year and a half, working as a co-chair of the Healthcare Committee of Amcham. And I'm very proud to say that during this period, we really revived the Healthcare Committee. And we have been working really tirelessly into shaping the environment of healthcare and reach the EU standards. This couldn't have been possible, by the way, without the support of Peter, Daniel. They were quite involved in this and my, let's say, partner in crime, Kostas, who is not here today, the former Bulgarian MSD Managing Director. And, you know, together, we managed to achieve quite a lot and put healthcare really on the top of the agenda of Amcham and respectively of our society. We have a very tangible initiative that we are working right now at this very moment as I speak. We expect to see the results in the next few weeks. And it's like a policy shaping initiative with which we would like to address two major topics. One is changing the perception that healthcare is actually an investment in our future of the nation and provide also some specific suggestions, share best practices. We are gathered to know quite a few people with a lot of experience international and also passion to make this happen. And really would like to show that we can, you know, invest sustainable. We can improve inefficiencies, like for instance, digitalization of healthcare, a major topic, not the only one, but quite important that we have here. So in the next few weeks, we will be happy to produce the outcome of this effort. It has been quite a while since we started. So I really trust this is something that started last year and this is ongoing and this is quite strategic. And I really trust that this should work, should be continued and amplified. This is why I accepted this nomination and this challenge to be here talking to you. Actually, this is an ongoing effort and it has to be continued. It's not a one-time thing. And I'm also an advocate for strong alliances. I'm very glad also to heard it today here. And I might say I'm very proud that with the Healthcare Committee, we started, you know, also collaborating with the Swiss Chamber of Commerce, with the German Chamber of Commerce, things that really would make a difference because the objective is too weak and needs a lot of allies and resources. So in case I'm elected, just to sum up, I would like to focus, you know, into directions just to share with you what I think would be my priorities. And I hope I will be very useful in those. First, obviously assuring the continuation of this strategic topic of improving healthcare and the wellbeing of the Bulgarian citizens. And the second, also very important, creating predictable and transparent business investment climate. And this is relevant for all of us who are doing business in this country. And this of course goes hand in hand with the rule of law improvement, which is mandatory for the prosperity here. So thank you very much for considering me and good luck to all the rest. See you later. Thanks.
Thank you, Ruslanat. Thank you very much for having you here. And we are moving forward with Simeon Stoichev from Progress. Hello, Simeon. Welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. It's great pleasure to be here again and I would say great honour as well. So yeah, my name is Simeon Stoichev and I represent one of the most reputable and successful technology companies in Bulgaria, Progress Software. For those who don't know, Progress is a 40-year-old US public company with about $2 billion in market cap and 16 offices worldwide. We entered the Bulgarian market in 2014 by acquiring one of the most innovative local tech companies, Tel Eric, where I served many years as a CIO. Since 2014, we have become one of the biggest IT employers in Bulgaria with many local contributions and recognitions. Last year, we were named fourth employer of 2020. We are one of the top three biggest tech companies based on revenue in Bulgaria. And many of the technology innovations that Progress launched on the global market are actually initiated and created in the Bulgarian office. We're also a patron member of the Chamber and I've been serving as a Amcham Board Member since 2018. Today applying for my second term. Today applying for, for my second term. During the previous two years as part of the AMCHAM leadership team, I had the opportunity to get to know AMCHAM's unique impact on developing Bulgaria's business environment and of course personally contribute to it. I remain dedicated to the organization's core values and I would like to even proactively pursue its goals. I think it's fair to say that the chamber has never been so active and focused on supporting members and partners. We went through multiple transformations to ensure short-term and long-term value. That said, being part of the board, we've collectively found creative ways to adapt to the COVID pandemic situation. And I've personally taken a leading role in many events, discussions and roundtables that the chamber has organized. A little about me, my professional and global leadership experience has prepared me to assess the economic and business challenges in this unprecedented time we live and play an active role in solving some of them. I believe this can be achieved through bridging businesses together, encouraging learning from each other and identifying new opportunities where no one thought they could be found. I'm serving as the vice president of global IT at Progress and I'm leading a large and diverse team located on three different continents, responsible for building and training all internal and external IT systems. The global, the global pandemic which broke out in March last year increased my team's criticality, I would say. I was responsible for the seamless transition to the, to the digital workspace for all of our employees worldwide, 1,500 back then and 1,800 currently. My know-how and experience also helped many of our customers and partners from all kinds of industries, not only to survive in the COVID world, but also to continuously innovate and grow. In addition to my global responsibilities, since 2017, I've been acting as a legal representative for the Bulgarian entity of Progress. The Bulgarian office is the largest worldwide with more than 500 employees. And in this role, I carry out elections and deals related to our commercial activities at the Bulgarian territory. And lastly, outside of my immediate professional responsibilities, I continue to be dedicated to helping the IT industry in Bulgaria to reach its next level and open new opportunities for the innovative young Bulgarians to succeed. I'm looking forward to winning your trust once again and continuing my work and dedication to make Bulgaria one of the best places to do business. Thank you.
Thank you, Simeon. Thank you very much. Now, six were up and one to go. Tony McMurray, Ingram Micro, Bulgaria.
Thank you, Daniel. Good afternoon to the members of the Bulgarian AMCHAM. I trust I find you and your loved ones safe and healthy in these unique times. So, as per the introduction, my name is Tony McMurray and as you can hear from my accent, I'm English. I've lived in Bulgaria with my wife now since we moved here in mid-2018 to take up the position of managing director Ingram Micro Bulgaria. My own connection with Bulgaria dates back to around 2012, when as finance director of Ingram Micro UK, we established our European shared service center here in Sofia, which has now grown to more than 1,000 staff. We support nine languages and we've got over 300 different processes. And we're now one of the largest employers in our industry here in the Bulgarian market. Ingram Micro's creation does have some connection close to our region here in Bulgaria. It was back in 1979 when its two founding members, one, a second generation Hungarian, trading from a house in California, created what would eventually become the world's largest technology distributor and a leading technology sales, marketing and logistics company. So today globally, we have revenues in excess of 50 billion and a workforce of around 38,000. So our spiritual home over the last 40-plus years continues to be California. But on a personal note, my own connection with the United States does go back a lot further, so please indulge me. Coming from a large Catholic family, my grandfather in the early years of the 20th century left Glasgow in Scotland and stowed away on a ship bound for the United States with the hope of a job on its east coast. Now, on the way, the ship picked up its cargo of passengers at Belfast, which, unbeknown to my papa, included a lady by the name of Kathleen Donnelly, his future wife and the future mother of their 11 children, including my own mother, Josephine. So if we jump forward a generation, with this large family now moved back to Scotland from the United States and my own mother's moved to England completely, my connection with the United States has continued up until today. So just a few examples of, of my US connection. Our house in the UK is a stone's throw away from the ancestral home of George Washington. I chose the wonderful seaside town of Santa Barbara in California to propose to my wife Sharon. And I joined Ingram back in the mid-'90s and have spent 25 years at this US company. But last and not least, Sharon and I live here in Loznet Sofia. We overlook the US embassy, we're next door to the embassy. So every morning when we wake up and open the curtains, we see the US embassy. But these personal stories on their own cannot justify me asking for your support in my application to become a board member. So the question is, what experience do I have and how will it benefit the chamber as a board member? So I've got five that I'd like to share with you. So firstly, as the former director, finance director of one of Ingram's largest subsidiaries, which is the UK, I'm a qualified senior accountant of many years' standing. So my experience working in a number of geographies with strong controls and transparency of a US company will provide added governance to our board. Secondly, as a finance exec, my experience includes the management of significant, a significant balance sheet which exceeded $1 billion. I've been involved in a variety of M&amp;A activities and my interaction with the C-suite of some of the largest technology customers and vendors across Europe. So on this point, working for Ingram Micro for more than 25 years, I would bring, I believe, a wealth of experience to support a balanced board structure. On the third point, I know Ingram Micro may not be a household name in Bulgaria amongst this group, but it is built, we are building a growing brand here in the market. A place on the board would further cement Ingram's commitment to Bulgarian market, but also provide AMCHAM with an additional strong ground at its head. The fourth point is with regards to my personal character and just my general approach to how I live my life. So over the last 20 years, I have developed myself as a motivational speaker. So this is, this has been achieved through both my career and also through my personal undertaking. So most notably, my CSR fundraising challenges. These have involved climbing some of the world's highest peaks, kayaking the longest rivers, running back-to-back marathons around the world, I should point out, very, very slowly, and some long-distance bike riding, but all in aid of charity, which has so far raised more than $100,000. But the most notorious experience over this 20 years is, of endeavor, was in 2015, when I was leading Mount Everest at the very moment that the 7.8 magnitude earthquake hit Nepal. The text I received from my wife saying goodbye is one I will never forget. So my message on this fourth point is to you that all the above experience I hope to bring to the board of AMCHAM in terms of my positivity, my enthusiasm and generally my message of fortitude under the many challenges I have faced and that I know the board and the organization face on a regular basis. So fifth and finally, as a Brit from a country with a special relationship with our American cousins, I do feel my approach and my contribution will enrich the diversity of voices of the existing board. So, so far I've introduced myself and my connection to the United States. I've outlined some of the key experiences I hold and what possible impact that would make or bring to the AMCHAM. I will now outline what I hope to do as a board member, given my experience and what I know to be the goals of AMCHAM Bulgaria. So the first one, digital transformation. Given my career at Ingram and more recently the digital transformation we are undertaking here in Bulgaria, I'm confident I can make a difference in terms of shaping and progressing AMCHAM's drive to support and develop the digital transformation. As one of a number of examples from 2020, we onboarded more than 150 new staff virtually and developed a number of award-winning leadership and technology programs under a virtual format. But this does not only involve the provision of the hardware and software, but equally, and this is key for me, is the training and the change in culture needed in order for our staff to adopt the digital mindset. To me, the digital mindset is clear. One involves data analytics, process mining, BI, new uses of social media, media and all the other trappings that we often recognize under the technology stack. But complementing all the above is the more recent development that Ingram Micro Bulgaria has now been named as one of two center of excellence for all things RPA, including AI and machine learning technology for Ingram Micro that we use here in Sofia. But alongside our sister company in Manila, Philippines, all Ingram Micro operations will come to Bulgaria in order to enhance and advance their operational transformation. So on this first point, my direct support and strategic influence in the digital transformation taking place at Ingram Bulgaria, I wish to expand and progress from within the AMCHAM board. The second point is Clean Networks Initiative. So linked to Ingram's own, we sell and use modern technology. Ingram Micro globally continues to adopt the same principles outlined under the Clean Networks Initiative. So internally, externally, I am personally exposed in my professional career to the discussions we're having and the enforcement to combat the known threats that we can only see growing in the coming years. So I hope this real-world experience to bring to the board in order to complement the already established experience that I know exists among the board members. Third point, energy. Whilst my experience and background does not qualify me, I'm not an expert to speak with any degree of authority on the impending changes in energy laws. I do support the board's view that multiple issues surround this new legislation in terms of how it's been enacted and what potential risks are to the investment potential. So my goal as AMCHAM board member will be to add to the voices already being spoken. And my fourth one would be the future of work, linked to my remarks on digital transformation. The COVID crisis has presented Bulgaria with a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that we must embrace. We know about the strong board brand, we know about the highly educated workforce, we know about the multilingual society and we know about our unique time zone. But now is the opportunity, I feel, that's been created by the future of the workplace. I'm excited by the flexible workforce culture that the future now brings. And I'm 100% confident that along with the rest of the AMCHAM members, Bulgaria is in the driving seat to capitalize. So as a board member of AMCHAM, I would want to repeat this message to a wider audience. So, in concluding my presentation, if you choose me to be a new board member of AMCHAM Bulgaria, I can guarantee that the commitment and enthusiasm that's characterized by both my career and my personal life to date will continue with these added responsibilities. So I thank you for listening and whether I'm chosen to sit on the board or not, I remain committed to supporting this wonderful institution and the causes for which it fights. Thank you and bravo.
Thank you very much, Tony. And now we went, we're going to an end to our second part of the public hearing of the candidates for the AMCHAM board. We listened to seven prominent and very inspirational speakers and leaders that are running for those six available seats. As mentioned earlier, we've got an option, or you as members have an option to ask questions. I haven't seen any question type neither in the chat box nor in the Q&amp;A box. Probably now is the time, if you would like to address someone or some issue that was, were being raised during the presentations to do so. I'll wait for a while. If we don't have any questions, we are going to an end to conclude and close the session, which will be available for review after some moments, let's say on our website and will be distributed to our members as well for those that weren't able to, to attend it and to listen to you all. Let me thank you all, the seven of you, for your time, your dedication, your shared experience and shared motivation with us while you were running for a seat in, in, in the board. You've got various different experiences, you've got different angles from your business perspective. However, one thing we see in common is your devotion to develop Bulgaria, the, its economy, its business climates, as well as rule of law, which are probably the bottom line in our principles, in our mission. And the 26th anniversary of the chamber already, that, that those values marked the path of, of the chamber. I'll take a few moments also to add that you have probably seen that we have a brand-new logo, which marked probably entering into the 2021. Rebranding ourselves not only in terms of colors, fonts and combination of both, but determination to deliver our best in terms of team, in terms of board, in terms of members, for the sake of the members, for the sake of business sectors and the community. And the country as well. Let me double-check again. No questions so far, don't be shy. But if you have anything to ask afterwards, probably the team is available to address your questions. Dear colleagues, is there anything else we can add here? Probably not. Once again, dear candidates, once again, thank you so much. Dear members, dear audience, thank you all for being with us today. It's a lovely February afternoon, started with some skies sunshining, but afterwards transferring into a autumn storm. And now we have some lovely snowfall in the city center of Sofia. I don't know what's the weather in New York or Amurtak, but probably in Loznet. Tony, you had much more snow than we do have here.
Cloudy, yeah. Thank you, Daniel.
It's right. Thank you so much. Smiles for a final photo and best of luck to your campaigns. I have to make a final remark. Sorry, I missed it. Now it's time to start voting. Not now, but since tomorrow. Tomorrow starts the voting and it goes to the end of the month, February 28th. And afterwards, we will start, not we, the election committee will start counting the votes. We have the obligation to announce the result on March 5th. And afterwards, if the epidemic situation is well, we will pursue as making the general election on March 16th at the Sofia Hotel Balkan. We're looking forward to see you all in person with masks, with shields, whatever you've got, your swords or whatever. And then we'll continue with the general elections and the general assembly, reconfirming the votes. Again, thank you all. The session is closed and over now.